Good afternoon and welcome to the 2:30 PM Public Works Committee meeting. Agenda item number one, I call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two, Ebony Dumas. Is it Dumas or Dumas?
Dumas.
Dumas, okay.
I like Alexi.
Welcome. Appointment to the Board of Adjustment, replacing Berlin Ratney. Term expires May 10th, 2028. Representing Council District 3. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve in this capacity.
Sure, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ebony Dumas. I am an urban planner and I'm a native of Tulsa. I was born and raised in Tulsa, Oklahoma, living across many different neighborhoods within North Tulsa. I am a product of Carver Middle School and Booker T. Washington High School, class of 2001. After I graduated, I left Tulsa and went to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania for undergrad. After four years in Pittsburgh, I moved to Washington DC. And then DC is where I started to work in the arts and culture and nightlife sectors. However, working in those sectors, I started to understand that economic development, urban planning, zoning were all things that contributed to how a city can thrive. I then went to grad school for a master's in urban and regional planning at the University of New Orleans. And while I was in New Orleans, I also worked in the private sector as an urban planner at a urban planning, landscape, architecture, and urban design firm. I then moved back to DC and worked in the public sector. And so I've worked as a public sector planner for about seven or eight years. At this point, I've also worked in business improvement districts, doing planning and economic development. And now I'm back home in Tulsa. My wife and I bought a house in Kendallwood here about seven or eight months ago. And at this point, I'm really excited to contribute what I've learned throughout my professional career to the city that raised me and taught me about urban design. And yeah, that's a lot of where I'm coming from. And you know, I have a job that's remote, and so I'm often able to be downtown. I'm also able to contribute and see the different changes that have happened in the city over the past 20 something years since I've lived here as a full-time resident. And it's really exciting. And so I'm here and ready to serve on the Board of Adjustments, if you will have me.
Thank you so much for your willingness to serve in your vast knowledge in this space.
A pleasure to meet you. Tremendously qualified. I am curious, after being in DC, leaving Tulsa, what made you come back? What inspired you to come back to Tulsa?
Leaving DC.
So yeah, I do, I did love my time in DC. It raised me as an adult. It gave me professional opportunities to grow that were very unique. And so I really appreciated my time there. It's also really expensive. And my family is at a point where I wanted to be closer to my family, my dad, my grandmothers, lots of my cousins, aunts and uncles. And so Tulsa became an option as we started to see over the past, I'd say like 10 years or so visiting, that the city was building. The city was interested in like revitalization and a lot of urbanist principles that I really enjoyed in other cities that was starting to happen here in Tulsa as well. And the cost of living was still very affordable to us.
Excited, very excited to learn from you.
Excited to be here.
Any, anyone else? Questions or comments? Right. Well, thank you so much. We will be voting on this appointment on December the 3rd at our 5 o'clock meeting. You don't have to attend that meeting, but you can if you would like. If you don't have comments at that time, if you would like to. Thank you. Good afternoon. Agenda item number three, Kevin Hale. Are you here? Come on up. Appointment to the Board of Adjustment, replacing Tyler Wallace. Term expires May 10th, 2028. Representing Council District 9. Good afternoon.
Hello.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to serve in this capacity.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you guys for having me. Super excited to be nominated and terribly honored, obviously, for the nomination for Board of Adjustment. Kevin Hale, I own architecture here in town. We're office down at Pearl District on 6th and Peoria. We've got a two-story building that we've kind of renovated for historic preservation standards. I've been a licensed architect since 2012. Prior to that, seven years of experience. If my math is right, I think that's 20 years, kind of in the architecture and construction industry. Currently licensed in Oklahoma, obviously, Texas, Colorado, Michigan, Utah. We're also licensed in Florida, Arkansas, New Mexico. Bring that up just because with the jobs that we're doing on those, we're oftentimes kind of digging into those zoning, those districts and those standards as well. So it's kind of an interesting comparison always in the back of your head of, you know, how do we kind of compare? Majority of our work, though, is although we're licensed in all those states, we do work there, majority of it is in Oklahoma. We do quite a bit of work with native tribes around town or around the state. And, and we've kind of over the past couple of years, kind of rebranded, refocused, trying to do something more that we enjoy. And that, that's kind of taken us in the route of doing more cultural, more museum work. We're currently wrapping up as the local architect with our national partners on the Gilchrist Museum, working on the Will Rogers Museum in Claremore, along with the Gun Museum, the WM Davis Museum there. Also in Claremore, we're working on, you know, a children's museum, kind of starting out in Stillwater. And then also Booker T. Washington High School, their Heritage Community Center. I also am a product of Carver Middle School and Booker T. Also went to Emerson for elementary school. After graduating Booker T., I needed to get my grades up, so I went to Tulsa Community College. I got my grades up. After a year, got scholarship to TU, graduated TU with Fine Arts degree and arts education. CAD kind of worked my way through college that whole time, so I had a little bit of pocket change. And I decided that I would try and be young and go out and venture out in the world. Went, lived in Florence, Italy for a little bit, and went to a small school there that was focused on art history. In Florence, that kind of turns into more like architecture history. But it's a good combination. It's the first time I really thought, architecture and art. So you know, my background from my graduate degree at TU from Fine Arts, starting to run out of money as, as we do, starting to think about, well, I need to get a job. But I kicked that can down the road a little bit, and I went to OSU and got an architecture degree. So I went from there, it's kind of a winding path, right? Went from there, I was very adamant about going to a very small firm here in town. Being from here, all my ties are here. I kind of did my research, this was 2008. Architecture was booming. I had a lot of job offers. I really wanted a small firm. I went and harassed this guy that was a one-man shop. And he finally accepted me as an employee. And luckily, and then the economy went terrible.
No, no.
Not then anyways. The economy went terrible, but he kept me around. So, I mean, what I was really trying to do there, not to drag this on too much, I know you guys got a full day ahead. Is getting experience at a small scale. So that small scale gave me experience on all different aspects instead of kind of a larger scale. Eventually grew that firm into where we are now. I own it.
Thank you, thank you.
Too much, I was going too much.
No, yeah, the whole life, yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for, for your life story and, and your time. We're going to vote on yours as well on December 3rd. You can come to the 5 o'clock meeting if you would like. You don't have to, but thank you so much for your willingness and your vast knowledge and expertise in, in this position. I think it will be very helpful in this role. So, thank you so much. Morices Echaveira. Did I mess that, messed that up? Pronounce your last name.
Echeveria.
Echeveria.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, you're not, this is not your first time at this table. This is the reappointment to the Tulsa City County Library Commission. Term expires July 31st. And again, a reappointment and attended eight of 10 meetings, representing District 4. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Tell us a little bit about your time in your first term, eight, eight of 10 meetings?
So I have been serving the Library Commission for eight years. And I have the privilege to serve as.
Eight years?
Mm-hmm.
Have you only attended 10 meetings?
Eight out of the 10 for this past year.
Oh, I thought they gave, because sometimes, depends on the, it's like, 90 out of 100 meetings, okay. But they only, you only include it just these years. Okay. Sometimes we get, yeah, once a year. No, that's not true. Okay.
And I serve as vice chair. It's been one of the most rewarding service volunteering that I do. It's been really magical to see our library continue to provide so many wonderful resources to our, our community. And to show the country what a 21st century library system ought to be. We, our library system is one of the best in the nation. And we just got an award last year because of the work that Kim Johnson is leading. And yeah, it's been, it's been great to see how we continue to evolve and to meet the needs of our community.
And building three new libraries.
That's right. Yes. We're excited about that.
One of them is in my district. Councilor Detton.
Another chair at the table. We have a library in District 3 that closes at 6:00. And it would be helpful if we had longer hours or another library, sorry. But also, I wondered if you guys had considered the concept that Owasso is doing, where they're building affordable living above the libraries?
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was, so that is our, our, our library system. And we're the first in Oklahoma, we're the first library system in Oklahoma to have that model. And we're very excited. Our library truly does every decision with data. And so seeing the, the usage of each library is critical as we consider where to expand. So Jenks just has, we have an, we're going to have a kiosk, which is going to be our new location as that branch continues to, to have a lot of traffic. And so we're trying to offset that usage. So anyway, all to say that we would love to continue to explore innovative approaches as we, as we grow based on, on the data that, that we have of the usage of our.
I would love that in District 3, just an FYI.
All right. Thank you so much. We will vote on December 3rd. Again, you can attend that meeting at 5:00 PM if you would like.
Thank you.
And have words as well, if you would like to. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon. Agenda item number five, Phil Lakin Jr. Appointment to the River Parks Authority, replacing Stephen Freiter. Term expires April 8th, 2028. Representing Council District 8.
Yeah, leave and then come back to the table.
Get the badge here. My name is Phil Lakin.
In two minutes or less.
I know, I know. There's a very quick. On this thing. Yeah, I will go through my life story. I did come to Tulsa and was pretty amazed that there was actually a river running through the city because I grew up in El Paso and Amarillo before I got here when I was nine. And there were no sources of water at all. So I got very well acquainted with river and was a huge user of River Parks back when I had a one speed. Took some major donors at Turkey Mountain. Whenever I first got acquainted with Turkey Mountain and was at the foundation. Subsequently, the Community Foundation and others made pretty substantial investments in Turkey Mountain, expanding the parking lot, building restrooms, building those climbing areas as well. So very involved at Turkey Mountain. Got to luckily be involved in leading and cheering the first Wild Turkey, which is the huge fundraiser. And that's been expanded. And then, God, the first thing that I got involved with at River Parks was just redoing the trails. So I don't know if you remember the trails back when they had a piece of asphalt and a little bit of chat next to it. We took the trails and divided them, bicycles on one side, pedestrians on the other, did that for about seven miles. I got to go pick up lights and do a whole bunch of other things. So River Parks has been a huge part of my service to Tulsa before I ever even thought about becoming or running for city council. I'm very, very grateful to the mayor and his staff for this appointment. And I would love to be able to serve. Obviously, have been a huge supporter, well, have been a council as well.
All right.
Was that two minutes or less?
It was longer.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Okay, well, sorry.
We've got to put some time limits on in the future. Agenda item number six, rezoning application. Oh, y'all have some questions or comments?
He does need to attend the meeting on the 3rd.
I'll skip that. If you, if you don't mind being here. Any questions, comments? Okay. Agenda item number six, rezoning application Z7838 from RS3 and CS2CS for property located at the northeast corner of East Admiral Place South and North, 109th East Place, requested by Premier Management Group LLC, property owner Adam Fitzgerald, in Council District 3. TMAPC vote 7-0-0.
Okay. Hello, Susan Miller with the Planning Office. This is about a one and a half acre piece of property, most of which is already zoned CS. I think they found out they had a small portion zoned RS3 when they tried to recently come in for some, to Development Services for some permit work. So this, this request is to take all of this track to CS. There is an existing HVAC company on the site that has operated for a while. Again, I don't think they realized that they didn't have CS on everything. So that's really what it is. It's an existing business. It is already, has a land use of multiple use on the property. So it was envisioned to be something other than single-family residential. There were, there wasn't anyone that showed up at Planning Commission, and it was unanimously recommended for approval.
Okay. Questions or comments?
I didn't hear anything from anybody in regards to that. And I know that that's highly industrial over there anyway. So I think it's a good move. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Oh, Councilor.
What are they planning on doing with it?
It's existing business. It's HVAC business. It already exists, so same.
So there's no residents on there? It's just?
No.
Part of it is ours?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Thanks.
No.
Agenda item number seven, ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget to make supplemental appropriations of $462,620.99 recognized from unappropriated fund balance within the golf course fund. Yes?
Corey Weisman, Finance, Budget. Start off with the good news with this fund from last year. Our revenues exceeded our budget by $514,000 through golf fees and other revenue items. However, our expenses did run over by $462,000. So we need to increase that appropriation with this budget action. We're just now kind of getting this done. Accounting, we just switched operators from Trune to Sadorkis Golf. So we had to reconcile some of those numbers, make sure they all matched, and everyone's on board. So we're good to go as soon as you guys approve this.
Questions or comments? Councilor, Director Rett, put in the safe account, don't worry.
That lady over there?
Girl.
So we're, revenues over expenses?
Yes.
Were off?
Revenues were up over expenses.
Over the expenses.
Yeah, we had, let's see, our revenue, revenue was higher by $514,000.
Okay.
And expenses was $462,000.
Awesome. That's going in the right direction.
Going in the right direction, yes, yes.
Good job.
Yeah, to get that.
And so far, they're approved.
Because that didn't sound right, did it?
That's not how it's always been.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I made sure I double-checked.
Yeah, got it. Great.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget to make supplemental appropriations of $13,773,579 recognized from unappropriate fund balance within the 2023 Temporary Sales Tax Fund, Housing Initiatives.
Hi, I'm Jake Cap, Capital Budget and Finance. And as you mentioned, as, as it reads there, this is from IT3, the sales tax portion of that. And this is just doing the first round of that $75 million as approved by voters. Putting that into place this year. And the rest of it will go.
Are you new?
The final round will be spread out between 2030.
All right. Are you new to Tulsa, City of Tulsa?
Uh, no. Just new to the table.
I've never seen you. Welcome. What's your name?
Jake.
Jake, okay.
Who does capital programs.
Yes.
Thanks.
Capital budgeting.
He does the capital programs.
Okay.
And works with.
I think it's a shirt.
A protege of Jared's.
What do you mean?
He thinks it's summer.
It feels like it.
It does.
It does.
All right. So we know what this is. Is there a follow-up presentation you came up here?
Yes, just on the next item is related to this. And so thus is the budget end of it. And then I'll talk through the economic incentive policy, which is the next item.
Are there any questions on what he has spoken to so far? Okay, so I'm going to go on to agenda item number nine. Resolution of the City of Tulsa adopting the economic development incentives policy titled Tulsa Housing Impact Fund Policy and dated November 19th, 2025 pursuant to the provisions of Title VI, Chapter 2, Section 206 of Tulsa Revised Ordinances.
Hey, Councilor, Sarah Davis, Council Administrator. We talked to you all last week about the economic incentive policies, so just for the public who may not have been watching. In the last item, the budget amendment was related to the Improve Our Tulsa III housing dollars, the $75 million dedicated towards that effort. The ordinance, there's an ordinance in place in Title VI that requires all funds that can incentivize economic development essentially need to have an economic development incentive policy. And that needs to be approved by resolution by the council and the mayor. Last week, our friends at HPN, who are back in that room, they're welcome to come up if they'd like to, they talked with you on Zoom through that economic incentive policy. I went through kind of the history of creating that. And the, the feedback from, we'd met after that, that, that presentation was really increased a little bit more on the community engagement and the reporting of those funds. And so in your backup material, I highlighted the areas that we added based on your comments. So one was on making sure the district city council not only knows of the project application, but if there are known dates of community engagement opportunity, that is an internal control that the city representatives on that committee need to let that counselor know about those items. Then another one is earlier on page four, and it talks about a component of project level review needs to include an evaluation to the extent that there has been community engagement for those proposals. So that's now part of the application process. And then finally, towards the back on reporting, there already were several reporting requirements. So there was a quarterly report already to council on progress and outcomes and compliance. But there are monthly summaries that the city was receiving. We went ahead and added that the city council would also receive those just written monthly summaries as well. Nothing else in the policy, the draft policy that was in backup last week changed. This is on your agenda for tonight. The kind of logical way of approval would be approve the economic incentive policy before you do the budget amendment. And that way, there's a policy guiding those funds. And then the budget amendment will be on first reading tonight and second reading on December 3rd. And then we're working towards the contract on that, which would be finalized after the budget amendment.
Councilor.
So I read this earlier today, but I don't really know what time it was. There is a place in this where if residual funds exist, then they're still used for the same purpose, right? But there's some strange language in there, like consideration be given to... It's three, it's used three times. Two times at least. Using the funds for housing programs. Like if there's more, if there's money left over.
So in the, I think maybe you might be talking about, some of the language is directly from the original resolution that you all passed.
You can scoot down.
And, and it talked about, you know, as program income comes back in, those are legally not restricted anymore.
Right, just like we went through.
Just like we went through with all the other things. But we watched what you went through in all the other weeks. And so those would still go towards housing as well. And they will return back to a fund that comes to this.
But it says something like consideration will be given so that they could be coming back to that fund. Can you find it on there?
Control funds.
It said three times in here somewhere.
If I could interject, Jim Bullmash, Senior Advisor to Mayor on Housing, hitting bottom of page five.
And he's sitting on the girl's side.
Fund reinvestment. I got permission to sit on the girl's side.
Considered for redeployment.
But I think, Councilor, this was intended that this is, some of the funds are intended to be revolving. So if Housing Partnership Network makes a loan or investment that then gets repaid, the default will be that it comes back to the city as opposed to Housing Partnership Network keeping it and reinvesting it. The city council would then have an opportunity to say, if say, three years from now, there is a different need that could be reallocated to a different need. If, if the will is such, it could be either stay with or given back to Housing Partnership Network to reinvest in housing. But that was the intent of that language.
Yeah, for the city council to consider.
Yeah. So if priorities change.
But it would have to come back to us.
It would have to be a new resolution.
Well, the, the city council is the entity at the City of Tulsa that appropriates.
But the city council could decide not to do it as well.
Correct.
Based upon the, it said in here elsewhere, current condition.
The most appropriate use of the funds at that time, based on the then-current environment.
He's got the real language out, the summarized language in there.
But also keep, I'm reading it. But also keep in mind the language of the resolution, that it be redeployed for housing initiatives. So the intent, when you did your resolution last year, was that this is revolving for housing, but we're giving the council, which makes, which appropriates funds, the opportunity that in three years from now, or seven years from now, if money comes back and the then urgency is something else, you have the opportunity to reallocate funds for something else. But the preference is that it be remain for housing.
Yeah. That's, that's my preference now. But, but I do know things could change. So, okay.
We did ask for finance to return those funds back to a specific housing fund, so it didn't go back into the, the big pot of revolving loans.
Did we just ask, or can we cause them to do that? Or is it just?
I, I feel like that will happen.
Fairly.
I'll take the word. I, I think though, though our finance director intends to set up that fund. So, and I think she will.
Will we vote on it?
We could write it in the budget amendment if you want to.
Got a separate fund be created?
People's jobs change.
Yeah, I agree.
It feels like it's easier to see.
If it's in a resolution, you just can refer to that.
Terrible finance director because I'd have a million accounts.
Or would this be that one part of the, there are minor, I was thinking of how it would show up in a budget. Like, would that be that one provision from?
No, it wouldn't.
I can't remember. You don't know.
It, it depends. Some, not all, all of your funds show up in that budget.
Right, that's why I was curious. We would need to use a provision to be able to see that fund. Okay.
Counselor Art, did you have some?
No, I'm.
I thought I heard your mom.
Yeah, just, as I do.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Counselor.
He's quick.
As we have conversations about meeting all the needs of our community, I do just want to help everyone remember that the $75 million was for housing. I, I sometimes see out in the rhetoric, like, but you've already spent $75 million on homelessness. And so the, this fund that was in Improve Our Tulsa III was to build housing, which does help homelessness in that people that have housing are not homeless. But it has not been for homelessness services, you know, shelter, those kinds of things. And so as, you know, we're talking about big chunks of money for getting a lot of stuff done. And so as, you know, we're talking about big chunks of money for getting a lot of stuff done. I just want us to focus in on that the IOT3, 75 million dollars is for housing at every level. And this is the first notch, just for anyone whose eyes are crossing as we talk about tens of millions of dollars to serve the community.
Yeah, to, to that point, I, I get a bunch of people commenting that we've already blown 125 million on homelessness or whatever, and they always cite this 75 million.
Right, because it's in the path to home kind of numbers.
And then I, I remind them that we haven't even collected the tax yet, so it's impossible to have spent it.
Where's 125 million on the phone? Where's 125?
It's in the 3H Task Force kind of homepage.
There are some things that we have spent.
Yeah, past three dollars from the feds.
No, the, the vast majority of it, this, this 75 million bucks that we don't even have yet.
All right, and the other exciting thing that we heard this morning is that 75 million has already been leveraged to unlock private dollars in more than a one to one match. So it's great. It's a good use of taxpayer dollars.
Beneficial for all, all parties. Private wants to be leveraged, not public dollars as well.
Did you get that down?
Questions or comments?
Media folks?
Any questions? All right, agenda item number 10, requests by Tulsa veterans of foreign. Thank you, Foreigner Wars Post 577, a waiver of fees for labor costs of $10,537.50 incurred by the Veterans Day Parade 2025 held on November 11th, 2025. Anyone speaking on this?
Anyone what?
Speaking on this agenda item?
Well, I don't know, but if it needs a sponsor, I'll sponsor it. Over 10 and 5.
Well, who put it on here?
It wasn't me.
I think it's just SOP.
They do this for veterans.
It's obviously, everyone's been supported, in my opinion.
Agenda item number 11, travel authorization per council rules and order of business in the estimated amount of $2,000 for Christopher Bingle to travel to.
Wait, 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 first off, let's get my name.
That's what it said.
Counselor Bingle.
Sorry. Counselor Bingle.
I'm a Christian.
There we go.
Counselor Bingle. To travel to, what is that, Selle?
Yep.
Sella, yeah.
Sella, Germany, to celebrate the 25th anniversary of our sister city partnership to be held on December 11th, 2025 for hotel, airfare and per diem. Counselor Bellas.
Are you fluent enough in German to go? You did spend time. Yes.
Exactly.
Without.
You're putting me on the spot.
He speaks Tolson and that's why he's saying.
Spacen Sie kein Deutsch.
Ein Deutsch or kein?
Okay, we'll take it.
So, yeah, I really, I really feel apprehensive about asking for these funds. But obviously I'm the only one from the city who can go right now, so I hope you can support this.
Do you sponsor this sister city?
Yeah.
Yes.
So what you mean, you're the only one to go, you're the sponsor for, right? Don't we all have, doesn't everybody have a sister city?
I think he's just being mindful of our dollars.
Yeah, which I appreciate.
We also appreciate you taking time from your life to go.
Yeah, I'm not very happy about the flight. That's what I'm very apprehensive about. Because you spend the whole day traveling there and back.
Thank you for representing us.
You can watch movies.
Once in a lifetime occasion and it's 25 years.
Maybe just speak English while you're there. Given what we just heard on your German.
If there are no other questions to comment, we are adjourned.
You're gonna bring us a 60s?